We need a motion to go into an executive session to discuss personnel.
Yes.
Hold on a second.
You can move.
Bobby. What's your name?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Samer?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar? Yes. That should be about thirty minutes. Come back into the bottom of executive session. Hold on a second. What's your name?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Samer?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
This time I'd like to call the Financial Planning Supervision Commission meeting in Little Miami School District, order based Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand and six forty. A real call, please.
Mr. Beeler?
Here.
Mrs. Castleman?
Present.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Mark?
Present.
Mr. Watson?
Present. Approval of agenda. You have agenda before you have the motion through the agenda, please.
Seven of them.
Mr. Hurst, seven.
One second.
Mr. Martin? Real call.
Mr. Beeler?
Yes.
Mrs. Castleman?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes. First of all, I would like to thank Board of Education for bringing time with us this evening. At our previous meeting, I requested that we have this joint session so we have an opportunity to usually discuss some of the problems facing Little Miami and their position in financial emergency. I want this as a discussion, knowing that if the levy passed, where we might be heading with what your thoughts and goals were with that. And I think in the event of a fail, you know, let's hear you just talk about some of the concerns of where you see the district heading in the future. You notice, we have no agenda tonight. We didn't come here to make any kind of announcements. We didn't come here to make any kind of decisions. We're not going to sit here and try and come up with some magic formula or anything else. All we wanted to do was sit down and discuss and get your ideas on what kind of corrective actions we could take to get the district out of this financial emergency. Unless there's new suggestions from the commission, we will be adjourned in our section to meet at eight o'clock. We have people going back to Columbus. There are several people. We don't want to drag them night. And if we do need official leading services, we would be glad to sit down and work with you on it. Finally, I'd like this to be a discussion between us and the board. And if there is a time at the end for questions from the audience, I would appreciate if we could take them at that time rather than an interruption of our discussion now. As everyone else, everyone's aware, I think by now, that the commission was established by Ohio law, put a recovery plan in place that would resolve the minor forecast positive balance at the end of five years, and the district could come out of financial emergency. The commission, Ohio Department of Education, the Office of Budget Management are all committed to that charge, and we will do everything we possibly can to get the district out of emergency. The last recovery plan we had was to operate the district at state knowns standards, and a property tax levy substantial enough that would take care of the debt that the district has already incurred, plus operate the district at state standards. With those recovery results in, we're back to square one, and we're going to have to amend our recovery plan. And this is our answer. Let me start the discussion. I'm going to throw out several different items. These are not anything that I'm firm with or committed to. We could come up with a recovery plan, then same thing we just did. Nothing's going to change between now and there. There is a little bit of an additional balance that I think has come out of it. And we may be able to lower that millage or even keep it the same, but have millage enough to operate the district at standards. You can see the new levy in November, a substantial enough millage that you could get out of financial emergency and possibly bring back some of the programs that have already been cut. That's possible. You could come up with negotiations that create major concessions with your employees, all employees, and reduce your balances enough that you can come up with a much lower millage I keep, and finally, another thing I keep hearing, I don't think it's any secret, and it's come from all directions in the district, some people like to dissolve this district. As it stands, I want to reiterate, we as a commission cannot do that, number one. The Department of Education, Office of Budget Management are not committed to what the commission can do, and coming up with a recovery plan goes out. You, as Board of Education, may do this. You can start that right now, and all you need to do is petition the State Board of Education for a feasibility study. It takes about a year. The resolution should ask for a, you could ask for change in statute, possibly put a special assessment on all the residents to take care of the debt that you conferred. You can do this, but I caution you, be careful, because this solution, eliminating all the contracts with your employees that no longer become members or employees of the Little Miami Board of Education, because there wouldn't be any. There's no guarantee that they would be employed by any surrounding school district. They would be interviewed, hired, as any other teacher would. The buildings will also be assigned to other school districts, and there's a company debt on those buildings with their school districts. Also, any recap of equipment, the buses, the tractors, trucks, whatever else, cars would be distributed. The feasibility study takes about one year to do, and requires approval of the State Board of Education and the General Assembly. There's some scenarios where even a referendum could possibly be required. All the traditions in Little Miami would be gone, and not all solidations in Ohio have been well used or successful. I know there's other options. These are, like I say, I'm not committed to any of these. I threw them out on the table. There's other options that could be considered by both the commission and the Board of Education. This is my start, and I trust you won't be shy on suggestions or solutions. One further suggestion, because I know that a lot of people have a lot of things they'd like to say, I would suggest that on your website, you establish a page where people can write in on their, giving their concerns, but the only way I would consider any of those is if they have their name, their address, and their email. I don't want somebody writing in a hundred times that they want to dissolve the district and make it sound like that's not the correct thing. Having stated that, I will, I open it up.
Well, I have a question. When we borrow the money, and we continue to borrow, and something would happen to the school district, like if we were dissolved, then the residents of Little Miami School District could be assessed a tax to pay that back. Is that what you said?
No, I say you may want to consider asking. I think that would take legislative action to consult. But that may be part of your request. We find options to go out and run a detailed study. But no.
Thank you. What's your?
Yeah. I don't know that I have any new suggestions. It seems pretty clear that we're in a bind. I think the question that I have is, and has been, is if we, and we would have to have a forecast to know where we are, and I know that you've been working on those with the Ohio State, in terms of establishing some millage for another levy in the fall, or even if we're going to be able to do that. It's no secret, back in January of this year, we had a presentation that basically laid out what some, what we saw the options to be, and that was if we got to this point with no levy passage, that it would be either dissolution, because we would have maxed out our capacity to borrow loans, or change in the law, or that there would somehow, something would, something would have to happen, either the state would have to break the law or change the law, let's put it that way. Now, since then, the House just passed their version of House Bill one fifty-three, the budget bill, and in that bill, there's a provision in there that looks like it might put to rest the possibility of dissolution as an option anyway. So, I don't know what the timelines are for that making its way through the Senate, or if that amendment language will be in effect before the state actually has to take action with us. I guess, I am really confused about what our options are at this point, whether or not we can go forward. So, I would just say that, you know, take us back another year, and what was true then is still true now, and that whatever we decide, it has to be for the education of the kids in the school district, that we can't, I want to say settle, we can't settle for bare minimums to, for really, an indefinite period of time, at least five years, maybe more, and if you take a chunk of five years out of a kid's life, it's going to have quite a detrimental effect on their education. So, I would just like to say that whatever we do, it has to be beyond state minimums. If we put another levy on the ballot, I would like it to be something enough to pay back the debt and to start restoring some of our services that we had three, four years ago. So, what that means in terms of millage, I don't know, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, depends on how much we have to borrow for this coming year, and if we're even able to borrow. But to go any, and I, you know, I tried making a case for this when you guys were deciding what to put on the ballot last November, and I think those things are still true. I think we lost votes when we went to minimums, because there were a lot of people who said, we pay more, we'll come back to state minimums, we get less, so why vote yes? You know, I think that was a real hard, hard thing for a lot of people to swallow. So, I'm going to shut up here and let other people talk, but I, again, I just want to make sure that whatever we decide, that it's to start restoration of education back in this community, and anything less than that, I will have a difficult time supporting. The most important thing is that we educate our kids, and all of the things that go with having a school system, you know, personnel, the senior resources issues that we brought up, it's definitely a part of our community, but our main mission is to educate our children. And if they can't get up here, you know, it's a lost opportunity. We'll never get them back.
I think you've got a fine, you've got a balancing act there, where you're going to be educationally responsible, or you're going to be financially responsible, or a combination of both. I think it won't be, we had the recovery plan, we did, by taking to standards, we're still five million dollars, and the whole to make up for that. And I think what we, our intention was at the time, and they still pay us, let's get them going, let's get them started, then if they need additional, then we'll have to get some additional money. I think, now, this is a thought. Now, I think seventy, ten years ago, I think more money was being spent than what was coming in, instead of getting the money to come in and then spend it. And otherwise, you would never incur this kind of a debt. I mean, you can't spend money when you don't have it.
Well, I mean, that's how levy cycles go. You know, every five years, we have a levy, and so we are collecting more for the first couple of years, and then we do the deficit spending on the tail end until we have to go back and get that renewed or ask for more. Let me just say this, because I think, this is this, these numbers I keep throwing out, and I know you're all probably really tired of me saying them, and I don't know how many districts this affects, but in Little Miami, we're at state minimums. We can't go any lower according to state law. So, we know how much it costs to educate a kid. Roughly seven thousand, a little bit more right now. So, we collect roughly, I'm going to round off these numbers, fifteen million dollars in property taxes. We collect, help me here.
Less than ten.
Less than ten with our state foundation money. We get a couple of million with the rollback money, the state allocation, and it costs thirty million dollars to do all this. So, every year with the basic minimums that we collect, it's twenty-seven million. We need thirty to operate at state minimums. When I, when I look at those numbers, I am so frustrated, because this to me is not this community's problem, it's not our problem, we haven't done anything wrong, we've been very, very good with our money, we've had auditors come in, we're giving, you know, blue ribbons for the job, and yet every year, we're three million dollars short, and I say, the state of Ohio needs to figure it out.
That's true. I don't disagree, or, you know, disagree with that, but that's, that's something we have to deal with. I mean, it's there, that's a fact, and that's one of those times we have to deal with until it changes.
I guess my question is, you know, I know you're here to get us financially on track, but if we are at state minimums, and we only have a certain amount of revenue coming in, okay, we should be able to operate at state minimums with that money, without it asking for any additional revenue. That's what should happen, and it's not happening. So, that's one of the short three million dollars a year, and that's what got us into this mess. You're about the money part of it, we have to watch for the education of these kids. And I hear what you're saying about, you know, like the bullet for five years, but I'm looking at these kids out here, I can't, I cannot say to these kids, you know what, you're going to, I'm going to sacrifice your education for five years and see if the community will pass another levy to get you back to where you need to be. I can't do that. I cannot look these kids in the eye and say that, you know what, I'm going to sacrifice you. But that's what it feels like.
Mike, you make a good question. Just want to clarify, you said you've been operating at state minimums? I thought you'd been operating above state standards.
We will.
So, next year, we state.
Correct.
So, the last few years where there's been the deficit, you've been above state minimums.
Yeah.
Right?
Not much. For the time I know, much. And we will, even at, even with bringing down state minimums, we still can't do it.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, and I've got to interject just on one comment you've made about, you know, if you're at the state standards, and you're doing this, this, and this, you should be able to collect enough money to break even. So, the state has to fix it. Just as, on something you said there, you know, one of the things that I've heard for the last several years, you've probably heard in the last several years, are the voters that say, the state has to fix it, so I'm going to send a message to the state by voting against the levies. Now, I mean, and I'm not saying that we haven't, people in the community have not tried, but again, I think that's another one of our challenges, to get the message out to everybody that says that, and let them understand that if they really want the state to do something, you don't fail levies, you pass the levy, you call up your state representative and say, fix it or I'm voting for your opponent, and it's election cycle. But, I mean, it.
I understand.
Right?
I understand that part of it.
But we still have to, can you move this? I mean, I've got a daughter that's in the fifth grade, I got a daughter that's in the ninth grade. I wanted to have the best of everything, but I also realized that you have to be able to afford what you can give her, and it's unfortunate, yes, certain changes may have to be made. I also realized that the educational process lies on, also on families and on the parents. I don't go to the schools to provide one hundred percent of my children's education. I and my wife have a responsibility in our, of our children's education. You know, this is something that we've got to come to grips with as a community. I mean, I don't, what was the final number, failed by, how many votes?
Hundred and forty-eight.
Hundred and forty-eight votes. I mean, so that's not, you know, I heard somebody was quoted as saying, it's a message, you know, a hundred and forty-eight vote difference is no message. It's people that didn't get out and vote, that anyone get their feet wet. But we, we've got to find that balance. This Hamburg and I exchanged correspondence in the past about, you know, we need to make some adjustments, and yeah, it's hard to tell students, well, we're going to eliminate certain things, but I think it's more important, we have to, it's more important at this point that we create some financial stability. We, every election cycle that we lose, we dig a deeper hole. We got to stop digging the hole, we got to start putting claw handles inside so we can climb out. And I think that, you know, if we do that, you know, it's going to take a period of time, but I think we're going to be, you know, I believe we're going to be okay, I believe the students are going to be okay. I.
I'm going to have to just disagree with you for just a, on a main point.
We disagree.
Please, that's what I do. From the standpoint of, we pass a levy, say we don't pass a levy, we don't owe the three million in the hole, where's that money come from? It's obviously assistance fund. We don't pass another levy, we go deeper in the hole, right? At some point, there's, you would think there's an end point, but state of Ohio is telling us at some, I mean, there's, this new hospital, one fifty-three, says there's no way, you can borrow basically as much money as you want. My question then becomes, why would anybody want to pass a levy? You are getting the minimum education, right? I mean, you're, you're operating at minimums, and you're, you're getting it for basically three, four, four million dollars short. Why would anybody want to pass another levy? So, there's a fundamental systemic problem with the system, and if they choose to push Little Miami, I'm guessing, people are going to get it, that they're going to figure it out, and they're not going to say, you know what, oh, let's just get by, but, what did you say? Pay more, get less, vote yes, you know? I don't think they're going to do that. So, personally, you know, there's, there's a big problem there. And then the other piece that I've heard down the road was that you're potentially, there was talks of maybe using vouchers, or not vouchers, but waivers to drop below the state minimums, and I'm not at all interested in that part of it, as far as part of us are concerned. I agree. I don't, I don't think we can do that as a board from an educational standpoint. So, I think what we need to talk about is our goal, and your goal, and if there's a possibility where we can, can meet in the middle, that, and I do believe that we need to hear from the community and what their thought process is on here, because they're very, it could very well be that they want to dissolve this district, it could very well be they want to split the district, it could be that they want to pay fifty mils. But I think we, as a unit, if we're going to do it this way, we need to sit down and hear from them as well.
You're actually right. We have to fix our own problem right now, because the state's not going to fix it anytime. And I agree with you said about the incentive of the state or for the new state to, I mean, there's several things that the state does, it gives people incentives not to vote on levies, like letting vote in first place.
Agreed.
And I don't like taxes, you know, but, you know, nobody asked me if I want to vote by another F-14 or anything else, they just said, there it is, you're going to pay for it.
Agreed.
So, but, you know, we, it's one of the few areas where we have some of our own vocal control in our hands, you know, how, how we operate our school districts is one, and I think, I want to see the district and the community get back to that control. People are right, we have to hear from the community, the community has to be responsible to come out and express their wishes. And I don't know what the answer is, a hundred and forty-some votes don't give me the answer. I know when there were higher standards, you know, elections were being, or levies were being lost. I mean, I mean, I think you have to ask the question, what if, what if the majority of the people that are willing to vote in Little Miami just want a ride with state minimums? I mean, you know, so far, at the ballot box, the majority is saying, we're willing to do without. So, we either have to convince, we either have to change that majority in some way, or, or offer another option, and I think that's part of what happened here, is to offer yet a different option. I also think whatever option is, and, you know, Mike, I have the highest regard for every person who works in, paid, volunteered, elected, otherwise, in the Little Miami school system. Our personal experience has been nothing but fabulous. That said, we've got to get, there has to be a united, totally unrestricted, no questions, no nod, hundred percent support for whatever course is going to be taken, because the slightest crack in that support is what gets a hundred and forty-three vote loss. The slightest crack in the support gets a hundred and forty-three vote loss. I mean, no one has been at any meeting that spoke of, nobody wants anything negative for the school, they all want positive things. People have different ideas on what that is, but at some point, we have, once a decision has been made, on a course of action, it has to be that unyielding forward push by the people that the rest of the community look to for signals as to whether or not they should support or not support a levy. And I think we, as, as the people that are active in the community, have to be aware of the entire community, and it's perhaps impossible to do so, but when you're talking about a hundred and forty votes or three hundred votes, or all are losses, it's been by small numbers, it's these little pockets of people that are dissatisfied or unhappy that combine to lose levels. Somehow, we have to all, not, not just find a way to go forward, we have to try to find a way to bring people together rather than pushing people apart in our community. And this community, I mean, the community I see is a pretty divided community.
It's always better.
Pretty divided, you know, I talked to somebody years ago, and I was talking about something, and she lived in the community twenty-five years ago, talking about a division then between the borough and the mainville boroughs. I mean, but somehow, we got to find a common ground. And I know that's not, maybe that really be what Mr. Watson was going to talk about now, but that's just kind of directed.
I agree with you, and I think that's probably one of the fundamental pieces of this, and why the community is divided, is because of the school. You would think the school would pull the community together, and the community holds up the school, but that's what it should be, and it shouldn't be the school holding the community together. Does that make sense?
Right. I saw one point in time where I thought that the school, or something was happening in the school, really brought the community together. There was a point in time when everybody I saw on the road had yellow and green on, and go Panthers, and twenty-two and O for going states. I mean, we somehow have to find that, get that feeling back. And there's plenty of great things going on in schools that we should get, get that feeling back, I'm just not sure how to make it happen. It's frustrating when we find out, by twelve o'clock the day after the election, without asking, we find out that three registered voters on our eighteen-house street, one house in Baker, who have kids in the district, did not vote, because they, ah, it was busy, didn't have time. That's frustrating, and it makes me want to scream.
Well, I've worked on many, many campaigns, so I understand that frustration oh too well. It's not, it's not easy, you know, and get the supporters out there to get behind something and to have them, you know, try and get that fifty-one percent, it's very difficult. And now with the division of the community, as well as, you know, the financial strains, it's even, it's even more of a challenge.
I'm concerned that some of these other issues are, are creating new divisions and making some decisions which are too far. I mean, I have somebody come up to me and saying, well, you know, maybe, I've always voted for levies, but maybe now I need to vote against because, I'm like, okay, you know, we're off track here, we've got to somehow turn that thing.
Well, I, I don't know if I can say. Well, I don't know if I consider, obviously I don't agree with that.
So you would say that it's best for people to vote against levies if they're not getting 24,000 dollars?
No, I didn't say that. I think what you need to do is you need to vote on the issue. And that's what everybody should do when they go into the polls. They vote on the issue, is it good for me and my children and education the way I see it? If it isn't, then you vote no. It's not a for or against the school. I mean, when we built the new buildings, how many bond issues did we go through until we finally got a majority of the people to give behind, well, that's the program that we want? Same kind of thing, as an individual, you have to go in and say, is this right for me? Is this right for, you know, what I see? And that's.
It goes beyond the kids, it goes beyond the value of the community as a whole.
It does, and actually, to touch upon that, I'll just, I'll just. I passed these out to the board of boards as a community feedback. What I did, where it says Butlerville Elementary, you can insert Mario Elementary, and now you can insert Mainville Elementary for your information. But I did ask various community members about a year ago, and this information is still there today. And it was people who had children, who didn't have children, older people, younger people, teachers. And it wasn't from any one part of the district, it was all across the board. So you can see what some of these issues are that are within our community that you're asking about. So I guess maybe you aren't necessarily familiar with what goes on here. And I truly believe, from the bottom of my heart, and I've said this a thousand times, and I'll say it a thousand and one more. We started addressing some of these issues and some of these concerns. You guys have group pages, but it's five and a half pages of information, I did it front and back. We started addressing some of these issues and concerns that the community has, and combine that with the education portion that I know people in this room do not want to lose. And I'm 99% sure that a levy would pass. Some of it, for some people, yes, it is a money issue, and they will not, they will not vote for a levy. For 99% of the people, 95% of the people, it's not a money issue. They have issues and concerns, the way they see the district being run by the administrators or being run by this board. And you can see what some of those are. So we start addressing these issues and concerns. And I guarantee, I guarantee we'll start fixing the district. And it's nothing that everybody needs to know, or need to work.
Cole, to follow up on something that you said, and something that Mary Beth said. Personally, I would support, I would be in support of a levy that was perhaps in excess of what the state minimum standards would be. You know, about a year old daughter in kindergarten, quite frankly, I'm not a big fan of the, every other day, every day, that's, you know, as a working parent, two working spouses, that moves to be somewhat cumbersome. But nonetheless, you know, you have to give the credit where it's due. But what I will say is, the reason that I would be in support of a levy that perhaps was in excess of the minimum amount, albeit it was still even reasonable, I think there's more votes to be gained, more value to be added by presenting United Front. And what I mean, I'll just be very specific, I think all five board members need to be driving the train in the same direction. You can see where you're headed. So, you know, with that being said, I think that, you know, as Cole mentioned, you can say that there's different groups that generate 150 votes, that's true. But I think you could probably pick up 150 votes by presenting United Front. And that, quite frankly, is what I'd like to see.
All right, let's change the subject just a little bit. We put on a levy that was for property tax. Would we consider something else? Does it have to be a property tax, an arnie's tax? Well, it seems like that was our, to me, that was our only option from the, you know.
Yeah, I, you know, we never, we never even considered the same type of taxes, never even brought up, never even.
Well, there's a difference between an arnie's and a, we would, arnie's tax is sometimes a little more fair. So I just wondered if that would be a possibility.
I think so, when we get the, take a look at the buyer's forecast, and then when we get out of her state's certification, that was an extra, and at that time, we're going to start taking a look at monetary gaps and these questions, and we're going to ask Jay to sit down with Sean again and talk about the various scenarios that, you know, we look at and try and make decisions on.
I'd like to discuss a little about the issue of working at the state standards, minimum standards. Because I think there's a great misunderstanding of what state minimum standards really are. And if your school is operating at state minimum standards, that does not mean you are not a good school. It does not mean that. The state has set standards, and their minimum is, we don't want you operating lesser than this because at this level, we know you can get a good education. And it is fantastic when school districts can go over and beyond that minimal requirements. And for a time, Little Miami was. And in some sense, even though we had to cut back the state minimum of personnel in a lot of areas, I don't think that that means that all the programs are going to be cut to state minimums because we've got some great things going on in the schools. And we've been able to work with them the last three or four months, and there's been some changes. And I know, I'm more familiar with the changes that Mr. Bennett and staff are doing at the high school. But we've come up with some creative ways to offer a unique sense, a unique opportunity as far as course offerings, and you've got, you're working with Sinclair now, you've got something going on with UC, you've got the web classes. And so we've had to take the situation where there's not the money there was at one time, but we're going to try to create the opportunities in a different way. And I think we need to approach this more as, Little Miami has a lot to sell. Even though you say, and we're going out and saying, Little Miami's only working at state minimum standards, that does not mean you're not good. There's a lot of good things going on in the school district. And I for one really believe that there's many people that would like the option to send a child to a smaller rural school district. That's a good attribute for some people. And I think we need to start selling Little Miami. Instead of every time I open the paper or I listen to the news that Little Miami's going to dissolve, and I don't know where that's coming from, but Channel 5 must have some connections. You know, we're not going to dissolve the school, we don't want to. And I think that'd be a very bad idea for the community. And I think we need to stand and look, you've got excellent staff left, and it's unfortunate that some staff had to leave. But I don't think what you say, you can't look at a kid in the eye and you're only working at minimum standards, that's not giving credit to the great staff you still have.
It has nothing to do with staff.
I understand that, now what I'm saying is.
I don't have a higher revised food in front of me, but back in January, when I was reading it almost every day, there's actually something, there's one major law, it goes on for pages and pages and pages about how to run the school. And it actually says in there that they don't expect school districts to operate at state minimums. That is an assumption that they make.
They don't expect.
That you will go above and beyond what these state minimums are.
Right, and I understand.
In terms of, of the state establishing standard.
You have to get support, you have to have the money to do so.
I agree, I just, I just want people to be realistic about what state standards are. In order to hit those benchmarks to be declared an excellent district, the benchmark is 75% passing rate. Now, I don't know about you, but if your kid comes home with a 75 on their test, are you okay with that? I'm not. So, so if we get, you know, a string of 75s, we've met the state standards. Now, we do better than that, which is good. But theoretically, we could have a string of 75s and we have met state standards. And to me, that is not good enough.
And I understand that, and I agree, you don't want to stay at state minimums.
I just don't want people to think the state has this bar up here when it's down here.
It's very, and, you know, I have had, I've got two kids in the high school, and I know personally what we have lost in our district. From an elective standpoint, when you have kids, and Cole, you know this, your daughter has to take, you know, multiple study halls.
Actually, she has fewer study halls next year.
Well, that's because we're on the list.
Because of the semester that she did during each year.
But how many opportunities does she have?
Actually, she's taking a little more math next year than she had this year.
But how many opportunities? That's the question, that's what we're talking about. We are removing these opportunities for these kids. And that's very, when I have, I have a senior, and I have a junior next year. Our junior was going to be a senior, my senior had two classes, two classes, second trimester. Late arrival, and then he took a flex credit, he had English, he had French, and then he had, got out at 11 o'clock.
I really think her schedule's going to be more challenging than his semester schedule and the trimester schedule. And I hear what you're saying, and I, what Mary Beth is saying about, yeah, 75% in our household is not good enough. You know, 85%, you're, you're, you know, a little less SpongeBob. And you keep moving in that direction. But where's that going to come from? It's going to come from first, the family. The family's going to say it's not good enough. And the other thing is, and this is where it's been a real benefit, I think, is the majority, I'll say every teacher that my kids have had, 75% is not good enough. They want all their students to do better. So it's not, it's not the particular curriculum item that is being taught that's making the difference. It's the dedication of the teacher. I mean, whether that teacher is teaching a state standard course, or whether the teacher is teaching biological diversity, they want their students to do better than 75%. That's why Little Miami is excellent, that's why Little Miami's going to continue to be excellent. And that's why our graduates are going to continue to do well. And so, I just, I have a problem because I just, I sense and I feel a sinking ship attitude among people where they shouldn't be thinking that our ship is sinking. We're a little, we're a little unbalanced, we need to straighten things out, but this ship is definitely not sinking. And anybody that thinks it's sinking, well, don't take this to our label.
Well, I think that's a point I was trying to make, you know, right now you may have to operate at minimum standards, but that doesn't mean it's not good. And you may, for a time, if you don't get the 100% on the state report card because you're at minimum standards, that still doesn't mean that you haven't forged ahead, created different ways to do the same job. And maybe we'll find out later that, hey, there's a more fit, we've done this, you know, we found a more efficient way to do something. But I don't think you need to let the attitude that the ship is sinking interfere. I think you've still got to realize, you've got a good school system, and we need to work through the problem. We need to be united on it, and we need to find, and I think we found, and like I commended what they were doing at the high school, we found some different ways to do a better curriculum, or it's the same curriculum, I think it sounds like, there's better opportunities for the students, and at a lesser cost. And if you want something great and you can't afford it, we have to try to find a way to get it. And it's not always, you know, and I agree, we need some type of increased money from the levy, from the state. We've got to work through what we have right now. But I think the attitude of trying to dissolve the school district is absolutely out of the question. It should not even have come up. Well, we're not, we're not at that point, we're just into this. It's not like you've had to borrow 15,000 or 20,000 dollars in the last five years. We're not there yet, let's not get there.
But without due respect, we've been here, and it's been cutting since 2008. We've been doing the job that you guys typically come in and do. And we've seen the program cuts, we've seen the teachers leave, we've seen the busing go, we've seen a lot of these things that you just came in and said, oh, let's go and cut some more. Well, again, it goes back to the fundamental issue, it costs 30 million to do this. We're only getting 27, we're still 30 million short.
And we understand that.
So, I'm saying, and if we're at minimums at $3 million short, how do you, how do you make up that gap? Without a levy, you see what I'm saying?
Well, for better or worse, I mean, like many, like many special districts and municipalities in Ohio, there's a local contribution. And so I think that when you, I think it's, I don't, just like you, I don't agree with it. But I think when you look at it, I don't think you can really say, well, to operate at state minimum standards, the state should, the state is by statute going to give you the money to operate there, that's not how it works. They're still expecting a local match of sorts.
We do, 13 million.
To get, to get that.
We got that 20 mils, that's what the state says we should take.
Well, but then to follow on another point that you made earlier, I disagree that in the most recent version of the budget bill of the amendment, I disagree in that, I think that, you might think that it's a carrot that, you know, that the state will just let this go on and on and load your money and no one's quite sure what will happen. But I think it's more of a stiff because I think what, you know, and it's not legislation, so it's maybe not that proof you're talking about. But I have a feeling that, I mean, some people will look at us as the state, you know, I'm a resident of the district, I just live here, we have state members. But when the state, if the state were to take over in that set of circumstances, I have a feeling some pretty undesirable things happen, and the district as a whole would not particularly care to see that happen. Therefore, that will spur some yes votes when it comes to time for levy. I think that's what the budget amendment was, I think that's why it was complicated like that. For districts that are on the verge, it sort of helps pushes that in the right direction. Like, hey, you don't want us to come in here and do some really unpleasant things.
You guys are here now, there's no difference.
I don't mean to be unpleasant. So why are we here?
I got a question.
We didn't come here because we didn't have others to do. We're here because the Jacke wasn't getting done, so.
Years ago, this would be the eleventh, to get the 20 mils back, sure?
Correct.
Why did you do this?
Well, it was before.
This is before me, I think the idea was basically would, I think the 20 mil floor, take advantage of the gap aid and the state funding for that, that was there at the time.
I knew it was, Sean.
It was rolled back.
Yeah. Now, you suppose if you still had that 4 mils in the general operating fund, you would be sure.
But it was only for one year, I mean, it was going to come to, at the end of that.
But you never got it back, you never got that 4 mils back.
It was a measured decision that we made, we had a bond issue passed, and that we desperately needed to get more classroom space. And we also knew that we had that levy that we had to, had coming up very quickly.
But if you still had, if you still had those 4 mils.
Exactly.
You'd be on, right?
We had an opportunity to collect gap aid, and we knew that the state may or may not continue that. Was it a gamble? Yes, it was a gamble, and we understood that it was a one-year gamble. But it allowed us to stay off the ballot for operating money for a couple of years and pass the bond issue that we needed to pass before we start hitting up the residents for yet another operating levy. Which, you know, quite frankly, this is part of our problem in passing levies is because the state doesn't have any mechanism for helping out districts in high growth. So we have a 100-square-mile district, two-thirds of it aren't really affected by the growth. They don't see the growth, we have people that live.
For eight years, my district grew 1,000 kids a year, I don't know growth.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, is that it pushes that burden, that financial burden, onto a lot of people in our school district who do not see the benefits of that growth. They might live 20 miles from where we're sitting here and never even drive down 22 and 3 to go shopping. They are, if they don't have kids, they don't even come here.
Does this go back to her question about, are we communicating well? I don't know.
What I'm saying is, there's a disconnect with people, they don't care about the schools. They don't have kids in the schools, they don't live around here, they just happen to be by, by some bizarre reason of 1950 school boundary lines, they are included in this district. All of a sudden, over a 10-year period, we have grown, you know, two to three times the size we once were. And all they know is their tax bill is twice what it was, and they can't figure out why. And oh, by the way, now that you've said yes to that new school, we need an operating levy too. So it's no wonder that you get some pushback here, and I believe it's stronger than it would have been had we. would have been had we not had all of these building projects. I think that we could get the community to rally around the schools every five years for an operating levy, had we not constantly had to go back at them three, four times for every building project to get them to pass that too. And, and so, I, I go back to the state, why don't you give us some help here? When, I mean, we don't ask for the builders to come build, it doesn't help us for them to bring their new subdivisions in, but, you know, we have to educate the kids who are living there. In other districts, in other states, they have funds to take care of this problem, they give high-growth districts extra money to build the schools that they're, that are required, and it doesn't push that burden on to the poor farmer who's been sitting out here for fifty years, and he's like, I don't want you, and I'm not going to pay for your new school, and I don't have any kids, I mean, I just, I'm just telling them what, what they're feeling. It's not that I agree, it's just, to me, it's an explanation of why we are where we are today.
And I agree with Mary Beth, but I also agree that these are our kids, these are, this is our community, and we should be responsible as citizens, whether we have kids or not, to help pass these levies. But again, I feel like relying on property tax is very unfair. I think an earnings tax would really help us out, but again, we do have divided, we have three communities, three separate communities, sometimes I feel like they don't even like each other. So, we have to work together, and we've tried, and our communication, we've communicated, we have wonderful people who run our levies, it's just, you know, we don't know what the answer is, we have tried different things at different times, what is the answer? We've got people out there that brag, I'm a no person. Well, you know, I would not like to brag about that, but also, it is unfair for property tax, and I, I know that. So, again, you know, what is the answer? The state of Ohio funds schools so differently than other states, why is that? Why does, why do they not, and why do not the legislators have some gumption and sit down and talk about this and do something about it? We have asked other school districts, and if you look at that three-year forecast that's coming down the road, there's a lot of schools going to be in the same place we are. And again, I still have a question though, how come Loveland can pass a levy, King's can pass a levy, they're right there with us, they're right beside us here. What is it that they do that, that we're not doing? Well, first of all, they don't have three separate communities, and they don't have the land that we have. So, you know, I thought you guys were going to come in and say, hey, this is the answer. Well, you found out that there is no answer, what are we going to do?
I would like to make a comment. First and foremost, I've heard mentioned a couple of times the idea of the state should fix this side of things. Almost every state in the nation has had a school funding lawsuit filed against it. Nobody likes paying, it's a lot of money, it costs a lot of money to dedicate schools. And the fact of the matter is, the state of Ohio cannot issue cash like the federal government does, so if it is, the alternative is we all pay more in income taxes, and nobody's going to like that either. The bill isn't going to go down, it's where does it come from? Does it come from your checking account or your savings account? The total is the same. So, the state's not going to walk in and just erase four thousand dollars a year from what each taxpayer pays, it's just going to come from another pocket. Let's be clear about that. What I would like to, I would like to come back to the topic of state minimum standards because I also agree that it's a defeatist attitude to say that because this commission took the school district to state minimum standards, that you shouldn't have built it. State minimum standards in Ohio are by no means an inappropriate education, it's a, it's a quite good education. Minimum is set at a very high bar in Ohio, and in the case of this district, state minimum doesn't mean that your children don't learn how to read or do arithmetic anymore, it means that their class sizes got a little bit bigger, for the most part. There were some other cuts made, but for the most part, we're talking about the same classes with a few more kids in each classroom. You're still learning calculus in high school, if a child chooses to do so, you're still learning multiplication tables in second grade. State minimum standard does not mean that you give up in federal talent because children are no longer learning life skills, they absolutely are, just a few more kids in a classroom, and I don't think that that's going to make a catastrophic difference in the child's education. The other thing that I want to say is that if you want to drive a Cadillac as far as education, you have to pay for it. This school district, according to Ohio Department of Taxation data, of six hundred and five districts in Ohio, for which they have donors, the percent of the average person's income that they pay on property taxes here, there are three districts that are lower than the state. Three. Out of six hundred and five, you're number six hundred and two for the percent of your average income that you pay to educate your children. That's a problem. If you want to have the best schools in the state, you've got to pay for it. I just want to give an example, Youngstown City School District, a district in academic emergency, which is a relatively new state in Ohio, that's where your academics have gotten so horrible that the state comes in and takes over your academic grade one. They pay forty point eight mils property taxes, you pay twenty-two. They give three point nine times more state paid for a child because they're so poor, but they pay one point eight times more property taxes. To me, there's a huge disconnect there, huge disconnect. If you want good schools, you have to pay, you are thrown from the bottom as far as your effort in the state, that tells me, and I know this sounds harsh, but you're not trying very hard.
I have a question, with what Mrs. Bryce fathered. The school district only tried one time for the earned income?
Twice.
Twice? How was that presented? I mean, because that's sort of a new thing, that, when did the earned income?
Two thousand six.
Two thousand six is when they began the earned income?
Or, or, they were income, income taxes.
Right, but the earned income was like two thousand six. So, that's fairly a new, in that, in that field, I think, what about sixty to thirty-nine percent, I think is the, the failure rate of that. What were, what were any comments on, on that at the time, or was it explained well? Do you think the community really understood what an earned income tax was?
The Board of Elections, first of all, printed the ballot incorrectly the first time, and it was, it said income tax instead of earned. You know, we had stressed the difference between income tax and earned income. And so, you know, there again, people went in the vote, and it said what it said, and there's that pushback there again, of course, so.
Because I do, I do understand what you're saying, and that's another unique mix about the school district is, we have a lot of land mass, and so, you have a lot of people, voters who are holding on to a lot of land, and taxes may be higher because of, because of that, and I understand that. So, it makes sense that we might, you know, discussion on the table for an earned income tax.
We're also wealthy district, according to median income, I think we're twenty-first in the state with our wealth, I think that's the amount. So, again, you know, you have, you have landowners who will not vote for a property tax, you have wealthy income people that they don't want to vote for the, the earnings tax, so, you know, here we are balancing this, so what does work?
I might go back to, to copy the feedback from the community, that was it. When you get comments like this, are, are they like called in, or people writing into the app?
When I did this, I actually went out and saw these comments from the U.S., I asked them, I said, what are your concerns about the district? What are some of your issues, what are some of your thoughts? And I know you guys have mentioned about having a comment section or something on our website. We did that, last fall, the last fall we did that, and some comments were good, but I'd say ninety-nine percent of them were the bogus crazy comments.
Well, what about not, not comments, but what about a place where people, they have, you know, questions? It's not a question comment, it could just be a real question.
You could do both, you could leave a comment or ask a question, what, that.
What were the, what were the questions? Now, was that, I don't know, how much, how much is a website really followed, do people sort of get on that on a regular basis, or?
Some do, you have some people who don't have internet access, you have some parts of the district, and I'm not making this up because I'm one of them, I only have dial-up unless I get satellite internet. So, we have some people who just don't get on the website because it takes too long.
I, I like the idea of having something available where, if someone feels like they have a question that they could, you know, write into emails, the website, check into the website, leave their question, and it would be answered in a timely manner. I, I think at this point, we've got to look at options, and I know people can come to board meetings, they can come to commission meetings, and that's not always, you know,
It's not always feasible.
Feasible, but I, I think there needs to be an option there that, that, there's a lot of questions out there, I, I get phone calls, I get questions asked to me that I don't have the answers for, that if the school district Board of Education could set up some type of, of place where, you know, you could address questions.
Well, some of the questions and comments, I mean, one of the reasons why we did take it down is they were very deliberate, they were very threatening.
Well, that's why I would put comments out, I just, you know, legitimate questions.
Well, right, but you can't stop to post a question or a comment, I mean, it went to our mail, you know, our mailbox, so, I mean, you could post whatever you wanted on there, you know, I mean, just, you know, because you make a, you know, you might make an actual helpful comment, but, you know, Joel over here in row five is going to move along, I didn't ask you comments, so, I mean, you can't monitor what it said, if you were getting more of the deliberate, the old information, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't beneficial. That was our intent, was to put something up where people could ask questions or comments, and if they had a question, we would get back to them. So, I mean, that was our whole intent, was to get some feedback and get some, you know, questions and concerns that people may have, and attempt to address those. So, we did try that, it didn't work out so well. But I'm not saying that we can't try it again, I mean, you know.
And we're the point of trying, right now.
But to go back to answer your question, I mean, I went out, I, like I said, I went and asked, I mean, I didn't obviously ask all, all the children that were around, because it was a cross-section of populations, people by lines of tribe, it was, you know, all parts, like I said, all parts of the district, people with children, without children, business, people that always vote no, who always vote yes, who used to vote yes and now vote no, so it was a cross-section.
We have about ten more minutes. Everything we've been discussing has been very philosophical and issues. I know that it is for you. I know those of us who come down from college, we have difficulties too. I mean, I spent my career in education, I think that was all about, and to do some of the things we kind of do, it's, it's difficult, and these are emotional issues, we have to attack what is, we have to come up with solutions. You, you said it right, what are the answers? Only got to find the answers, we just can't sit back all the time and make emotional comments about, we need this, we should have that, if kids aren't doing this, kids aren't, here's where we are. Dispension debt, we need to get out of that, how do we do it, and what's the best way we can get that done? That's what we need to come up with. We all know, we all share your, your concerns about, about the educational process in the district. That's part of the equation. But the final answer is, how do we get the district back so that in the final year, you've got to balance and, and, and erupt, and so on. We want, but I just want to hang out with you about ten more minutes left on our agenda.
Can I, just before, since we're getting to the end here, I, I briefly want to thank some people that I know that were sort of exceptionally hard on the campaign this go around. I don't know all their names, but I know Joel Williams out there in the audience, did a lot of hard work, and I thought, I thought they did a really good job. Ron Thornburg, David Gray, so I don't believe he's here tonight, but I want to express my gratitude for all the hard work that they did, I thought they did an excellent job with the flyers that I received, and, you know, I appreciate their efforts very much.
Do we need another meeting?
We probably do. Would it be helpful now to get a couple of community comments?
I would like to, yeah.
And then if we could sit down and get it together, that, again, that would be fabulous.
I mean, I want to ask a couple of people.
I had two people fill out, like, comment forms, Phil Nicholson?
Well, I think the one thing that about everybody can agree on, that the big problem here is with Columbus, and it won't allow us to put impact fees so that all of this, these developers floating into the district can help pay for the upgrades to the schools, the roads, et cetera, and the only people who can fix this are Columbus. In the short term, I went to Governor Keston's presentation yesterday over in Mason, and he said, we've got to start thinking out of the box. And for instance, under private employers, the average amount that the employee pays in health insurance is twenty-three percent of the premium, and Little Miami is zero. That would save some money if the employees picked up a fair share of the healthcare costs. Well, I've yet to be contradicted on that except by people screaming, but it's been in print many times, and the charts I'm looking at say they pay zero premium.
Mr. Nicholson, I think what you have to consider is the total cost of the health insurance that's being picked up by the employee and the employer, if I'm not mistaken, Little Miami, they've got a high deductible health plan, which means that the employer, the total premium is less than what it would be under the traditional.
Okay, but they're paying zero on the premium.
Right, that's.
Ah, now, zip, zip it.
So, you have to consider the whole package.
What I said was, they're paying zero on the premium.
They're paying zero on a high deductible premium, I would agree with that.
Yeah, so the fact is, they're paying zero on the premium. Thank you. Rest my kids. Also, you may want to start thinking about outsourcing services, which is pretty common amongst businesses that have to make a profit. And as regards fund raising too, on the last election, the pro-levy group raised approximately thirty-six thousand dollars, according to the records at Board of Elections. I'll find out soon how much they had raised on this election, but if they average that kind of money over the last seven attempts, that's approximately a quarter million dollars, why don't they raise money on a routine basis?
They've just got voted down.
Well, instead of raising money to pass a levy, why don't they raise money to give to the schools is the point.
Will you write a check?
Well, that would have paid for a lot of pay-for plays. Okay, so the point is, think out of the box, you're talking about the instant fix. And there's some ideas you may want to think about. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks so much.
The last person is Tanya West.
Hi, I want to thank you for this type of forum, I think it's been extremely helpful for the community to get more information. I have been in the school district for almost fifteen years, and I have three kids in the district, and I love Little Miami. Last couple of years have been really hard, my oldest is entering fifth grade, and, so, you know, as we continue down this path, I'm starting to get very concerned about what's, you know, going to be the store for, for my children when they get into high school. I do not, I do not like state minimums because colleges and universities are very competitive these days, and for students who have the ability or want to go into advanced or enriched classes, should have the opportunity, and I don't want to have to seek some other alternative to make that happen. I would hate to see Little Miami dissolve. I would hate to see Little Miami dissolve. However, I realize we're an extremely large district, and I wanted to see if we've considered maybe splitting the piece off where maybe, you know, the students who would be absorbed by wherever it would be, Clint Massey, King's, Goshen, wherever, those students may be better served by what they already have to offer there, and then Little Miami could also better serve our students and hopefully pass a levy of enough mileage to, to get back what we need. So, I just wanted to know if that has been considered.
We are not considering anything that would dissolve the, or otherwise we'd arrange the district.
Okay. Could that potentially be an, an option? I just want to kind of throw that out there. And I also would like to request if...
Please understand, we cannot do that.
I, I understand. I'm asking collectively.
Thank you.
The, the other thing is, I would like to request if you could post, like, the notes or, like, this handout that you handed out tonight somewhere on the website. I've been having a very hard time finding information, and it's not always easy for me to get to these sessions. So, thank you.
Madam President, we appreciate the opportunity to sit with you. Again, we ask people for solutions. We know what the problems are. Everybody knows what the problems are. It's very, very difficult. But everybody's got comments, everybody's got opinions, but we need solutions. We need to know the best way to run around, going about fixing the problem. And that's why I asked this form tonight, and I think that we need to do it again. Having said that, you guys have a lot more business on the show. I would like to ask for a moment to return our meeting. So, Mr. Beeler? Mrs. Councilman? Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Martin? Mr. Watson?
Um, everyone, we're going to actually, if you're interested, hear from the community for about 30 minutes as a board. And if the commission would like to stay here, that'd be great if they want to, if that's fine. If you're interested, step up to the microphone and do it 30 minutes, that's max. So, three minutes, three minutes per person, and if you would, introduce yourself and make your comments, please. You want to do it with the commission here?
No, that's fine.
It would be nice if the community commission members could stay because they don't have to drive back to Columbus. We keep talking about state minimums, state minimums, how good they are, how great they are. I have kindergarten. Say we can pass a levy, do it with state minimums. And then we try for another three years to try to pass the levy, and we fall into fiscal mercy, and we come back out. And we ride this wave of state minimums, fiscal mercy, state minimums, fiscal mercy. So, then my child gets in high school. We've got teachers that are teaching 40 kids per class, and I hear us saying, I understand that he has to graduate with 20 credits, but he can take the extra credits to get into the College of Engineering at UC or to get into the College of Law at NKU. But how is he going to take those extra four credits when we're at state minimums, max class size? The classes aren't going to be available for him to take. Do the math. How does he take those extra four credits when there isn't room in that classroom for him to sit and take the elective four credits?
Let's have an answer. Let's have an answer to that one. I've heard that they will get to take them. I'm confused.
It was somewhat sarcastic.
No, I know. Well, let's hear the answer instead of the question. I mean, I appreciate the question.
Yeah, here's the answer.
Answer it.
I, I then, as a parent who pays for a public education with my income tax and my property tax, I then now have to go outside of the public education, high school, and go to Sinclair College, go to UC, go to the online web services. And a two, two working income household, that's very hard. I get home now at 6:30 at night. I barely have enough time to get them bathed, fed, and bedded. So, I, how, how does that, how does state minimums help my son? Especially when the law states, we assume that you're going to go above and beyond this. We assume that you are going to give your children more. We're just going to let you decide locally and regionally what you want that more to be. Obviously, our schools down here are going to maybe have a, a different, different take on what that more should be than what they are going to be in Cleveland, what they're going to be in Toledo, what they're going to be out in Waverly, where my grandmother lives. They're going to have a different take on, what do those kids need? Waverly, they need more of a trade vocational time education. Here in the tri-state area, we've got to compete with all these excellent rated schools around us, everyone's excellent around us, by the way, to get into the colleges around here. UC, Xavier. I also find a fundamental issue that my income tax goes to pay this pool of funding that, the Ohio budget then divvies up on this whatever plan. You know, if you're a rich district, you don't get as much per kid as if you're a rural district.
Spend three minutes, if you want to go ahead and wrap up.
How, how, how do I pay for the rural district when my son's school can't even make their bills? How is that fair? And it would be real easy for Ohio to solve this, raise the floor to 25 mills. Thank you.
First, thank you for bringing this to the community. My largest point is that...
You say who you are, please.
Oh, sorry. Susan Inber. And I do have two kids in the districts, worked on the levy several times. They're both straight A students. We don't watch a lot of Spent Bob. First, thanks for giving us the opportunity to speak. Second, my critical point, I know the commission's left, and this point's been raised before, ultimately, this has to be taken out of the hands of the voter. Kentucky is funded differently, Indiana is funded differently, numerous other states are funded excise tax, income tax, property tax, sales tax. There, this does need to be addressed at the state level. That said, my main request, and I know most of the state commission has gone, is to note sensitivity to the people on the issues. I'm a scientist by career, I'm a data-driven individual. However, this is very much a human issue. To say state minimums are fine is abhorrent to me. And I worked my butt off on the task force, and I have two straight A kids. And my daughter was one of 15 kids in Jennifer Desfo's French class, and these girls grew up together, formed bonds. That's gone. She can take AP online next year. And to say trivialize that is so offensive, I can't even begin to address it. I'm shaking, I'm so upset. And there is a human factor. These are our kids. There shouldn't be anything more important on this planet. And it's all, and I said this to a dear friend of mine, it's varying shades of stuck. And it's, the community needs to take a role, the school takes a role, the state needs to take a role. And part of that is to change the whole system, which I know is beyond this community, but I'm hoping the message gets out there. But please, 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 never say again, the minimum is fine, because I have two kids, I've been living this for years, and it's not fine. I've gone to six college visits in the last month. It's not fine. Don't ever say that again. Thank you.
My name is Martin Sousa. I have a third and fourth grader in the district, and I guess I have one big comment and maybe a couple of other points to make. But my comment would be, is I hear a lot of, like, people in board and from the community saying that bigger issue, the state needs to fix this, and I would agree, but I think it's a pipe dream, if we think that's happening anytime in the near future. So, I think we have to fix it in the short term for ourselves because it's us who's being impacted. I think it'll be an issue, like you spoke to the point of future districts, how many districts, when you look at a five-year forecast, are dropping off the edge of a cliff? So, I think in five to 10 years, yeah, that'll probably pick up some momentum.
It's actually about 200 districts in 18 months.
Right, but, so that's two more years. And then they start going through legislative process, and maybe in five to eight years, we have a solution. I don't think we can wait that long. And then the other points I wanted to make is, in private business, if someone was launching a product or a solution, they would poll the people that potentially would be the customers. And I'm curious, if the commission or the school board, when you guys make a decision as a property tax levy, an earnings tax, an income tax, or how it's going to be structured, if that's really just internal conversation? Or wouldn't it make sense to go poll a cross-section of the voters instead of, like, trial and error to see what gets voted on and go ask a bunch of us what we'd be most likely to support before?
We have done that in the past. We have put surveys out there. In fact, after the 2008 income, or the income tax, we put something out there to say, you know, okay, this wasn't it, what would you look for? And it actually came back, if I'm not mistaken, that, that the income tax was what they would support, was put it back on the ballot and it paid. So, we have put those kinds of things out there, and this, to me, is very helpful getting input from you guys, especially after this has passed, as to where, where to go next. We are in a very critical situation here, now we have two different entities that need to work together, and that's why, you know, we're hopeful to get...
I mean, it's frustrating to me to sit here and hear a lot of, like, what I would call surface-level conversation, but not, like, concrete ideas for fixing it. I mean, we've voted on everything, to be brutally honest. I would next want to see splitting the district to those that would support it and those that don't, or resolving the district, if we keep beating our head against the wall with all these other different options. But, I mean, the one other point that I want to make, and I'll be quiet, and this isn't an attack, this is just a thought from a guy that works in a private business and gets things force-fed him a lot of times from his employer, the gentleman that was talking about the premiums for the teachers. And I don't know a tongue, but I get this connotation when speaking to teachers that my insurance isn't that good, and it's this high deductible out-of-pocket insurance. I'm assured to pay more than $4,000 out of my, for my insurance, just for my premiums, before I ever go to a doctor. And I'm blessed at how much of my company does pick up of that. So, it frustrates me when I hear a teacher say, gosh, the insurance is bad, and it's $4,000 out of pocket, if you had to take that, you would just cringe. Well, the best case I'm going to do going into the year is spend four grand, and that's before I ever went to a doctor or anything, and I feel lucky to have that. So, it's just, for what it's worth, you know? And then, and I'm blessed to have that option. A lot of people don't even have the option of decent insurance, and if they do, they're told to pay a lot more than what I pay for. So, and that's it, basically.
Thank you.
Can I, can I be dry out of hunger? I pay $3,600 a year in insurance. My, and my husband and I work at the same company. He has a master's in computer science. I can guarantee you, he makes double what these teachers with master's degrees make. They've got the education, they don't get to pay for the education that they have.
Was this something to say from there?
Yeah, and I understand, I understand. If you do, all right. Brian Ray, did Brian just ask?
My name's Brian Clark, and I live in Morrow, and I had a question for the board, and I've asked this a couple of meetings back, but I didn't ask it informally, so I'm asking informally. Would you all publish in the Post-Journal of Financial Statement for 2010, in both, in a condensed form where people could understand it, and print the balance sheet and the income statement in a condensed form so we can see? You know, we've lost public trust in this country, and I think the biggest problem a lot of people have is they don't trust people, especially people that are in the public sector. And I've been coming to these meetings for two years, and I think the fact that we see a lot of smoke and mirrors about things, about what it costs to do this and this, but why don't you just publish your financial statements? To where, where if someone living on a farm or some people, I hope people out here can read a financial statement or balance sheet because we educate them, okay? But I think that we owe, at least to this community, to publish our financial statements so we can see what the real numbers are and not just smoke and mirrors. Thank you.
Yeah, just to dress up real quick, there's a, the five-year financial forecast is basically a profit and loss statement, and then it's published on the Department of Education website.
I know that Pete, personally, he takes it, but he's, he's inclined, and I don't want you to object, but I don't want you to hear any financial statements.
There's three years of actual history on there.
I said publish it in the Post-Journal, please. Are you obligated by all not to do that?
I'm asking Rich to publish. Thank you.
My name is Pete Mueller, and to be honest with you, I don't know where to begin. It is very difficult to really understand what all these comments are about. We have two problems. One, we have a levy that we can't pass, and two, we have a district that needs to be raised above the current level of academic options that are required. First things first, we have three board members who are not in favor of this levy. One won't be in favor until she gets to the five-and-a-half page of complaints fixed. Another one will not be in favor of the levy, because she can't understand why anybody would go for levy when we're at the minimum state situation. And the third one is essentially the same. If we don't get above state minimums, there's no point in passing a levy. We know, and we just failed the 13.9 levy. Why do board members two levy? Why board members say that we can pass a higher number of levies? Look, this is fundamental. Let me finish, you can get at me around.
Okay, I will.
First, we have to save the district, and then we can work at raising the requirements. We have House Bill 5, and whatever form it will eventually get the street, it will give the administration the best opportunity ever to negotiate a reduction in the 85% of the money that we get from taxes that go toward personnel costs, the best opportunity ever. That will, that should be able to lower our, our expenses. On another issue, people keep talking about splitting this district up. That is self-delusion and wish fulfillment. That will not happen. We know, when that first went on the newspaper, Loveland had no compunction telling us that they were not interested in, interested in any Little Miami students, they were, they have enough problems of their own, and they will take whatever action is necessary to prevent any Little Miami students, including legal action. So, regardless of what the state does, it, it will be the first time that will have been done. It will be challenged in the courts, and the bottom line is it will take years for any resolution of that issue. So, the bottom line remains what it always has been. We want more than we're willing to pay for. We're a bunch of pipers when it comes to the amount of money we pay for our schools in the bottom few percent. We can, we're in the upper 5% of median income. These are the numbers that are out there on the internet, provided by the state of Ohio. We just refuse to pay for what we want. This is not unique to the school district, it's unique to our society, but we're a horrible example of that situation. So, until we get five board members that are willing to look ahead and get this levy passed, so we retain the district, so we keep the district viable, we're just going to have these discussions like we've had with Stephen and Robby Fanner about second-quarter effects with no opportunity or no chance of getting anything done. And in, in the worst case, I would ask these three board members that are against thinking positively about this district to resign. They're not doing anything for us. They are, they are massive, they are magnets for the nobles and the state.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to stop.
Hey, I'm there, I'm not finished. Since I did, I was on the board for 13 years, I was off in '94, and it's just now... Since I did, I was on the board for 13 years, I was off in '94, this is now 2001, I have watched all the levies since '81. Never, ever have we passed one with more than 2% positive. So we're, we have always been a divided district. That's nothing new, that's nothing we should return ourselves away. We often be worrying about a thousand voters that swing the answer. That's what we should be concerned about. And we can't, we were very close, 149 votes, that means you could have changed the minds of 75 people in one, or gathered 140, 150 more votes, we would have won by one vote. It's fine. We can't get our voters registered, add the register, we can't get a mouse a vote. I mean, this problem is our problem and we refuse to fix it. And if we don't get some positive direction from this board, we're going to be in this mess for as long as I can foresee.
I think this is where our district is actually headed, is sitting down with this commission and actually looking at what, how to move forward. And I take offense a little bit to what you said because I have been on campaigns and I have worked my tail off passing 1695, 7.95, 8.95, and voted every single time for it. Every single time. This is not about the millage, this is about the education that that millage can afford. That's what, that's what this is about. And so for you to sit there and say that I'm against education and that I'm not for, you know, sitting up here and dividing this district, I think that's worse.
What I said, we have two problems that we have to solve. One is saving the district, and we do that by passing levy. And number two is raising the standards that we're able to course to accept. And number three, we are in the best position ever with House Bill 5, which is a privilege as it will eventually hit the streets. That will give us more flexibility.
So are you suggesting that we lower the salaries of our teachers?
No.
Because at 85% of our budget, the only significant impact that that is going to have on our bottom line is if we cut their salaries or the benefits, combination thereof. And I for one, do not think we overpay our teachers.
We don't overpay our teachers. However, 85% of our expenses are personnel-related expenses.
They are.
Everybody breathing has got the problem of high labor cost.
We're service industries, that should make sense.
The reason that unions get what they want is because boards of education are scared to death of a strike. If we think we're divided now, you have no idea what would happen if we had a strike. So the union comes in, they know how much money we're going to get from the levy, they say, here's what we want, they come into the pocket of demands, they take out three or five of the things that you do not have, and call that bargaining in good faith. And then we go from there, and the board of sanction gives in, we've got a smattering back.
Mr. Mueller, I'm going to disagree with you. We have made some great progress in cooperation with our unions over the last five years and made significant savings in terms of changing the step schedule and getting the high deductible. And what Mr. Nicholson wouldn't let us say was that what we pay in premiums is less, even, and I'm not even sure that they don't pay a premium, I thought they did, but we pay less in our total premiums than if we had a traditional plan. So whether or not they pay a premium or not, we are saving money because of what we were able to work out in cooperation with our unions in the last five, six years. I want to talk a little bit about the perception of Kim and I, and Stephanie, and what our positions are. And there's a little bit of a difference between what Stephanie wants or how she understands the problem and what Kim and I were talking about back in January when we had our presentation in the OASIS. And basically, that was trying to educate the community of what was possible coming down the pike. And still, still the state will not give us a definitive answer. If you look, if you, they will tell us something in private and admit that yes, dissolution is a possibility if we are maxed out on our loans and we cannot pass a levy. All right. So now, so now, here we are, we haven't passed this levy, we're going to have to post a budget in June, June, Sean? And this month, this month. So it should all come to some head, and they're going to have to make a decision. Okay, so we do a little campaign, not really a campaign, a presentation to basically educate people on what the circumstances are so we can be prepared. Because in my mind, and forgive me everybody out there for saying this, but my job is not to save the district. My job is to make sure that the kids who live in the boundaries of Little Miami are educated. And if that means they go to a different school, or the school district is called by a different name, and they're educated, to me, that is preferable than to have a less-than-adequate education with the name of Little Miami. I'm sorry if that offends people. I love Little Miami. You will not find two people up here that have spent more time than Kim and I on levies. For 20 years, I've been doing this. You people out there who've been running the last couple, you have no idea that I've been doing this since 1992. You just think I'm the bad guy up here who wants to ruin the district. Not so. My goal is to make sure that our kids are educated. And for you people out there who just, I mean, Mrs. Nippenberg said it, it is not okay. I have a senior this year who has been doing nothing. He's taken a couple of the very required classes, government and English, and we tried to cobble together some other things, you know, those opportunities, those wonderful things that, you know, either, he's not doing online, some, some, we have a flex credit, and we're doing an internship, and we're trying to do the best we can. But it is not okay. So in my estimation, we are not abandoning ship. We are not saying this district is going down and that we want to help it. We want to make sure our kids are educated and that they have those opportunities now and in five years and in 10 years. Because right now, with the plan out there, it's not going to be here for 10 years. And if I have a third grader, that is not acceptable. So we're not abandoning ship, we're just trying to get it right. So what we've done, so what we've done, this is what I do in my spare time, and this is what I do when I take off vacation days, I go to Columbus and we talk to the legislators and we make appointments with the new, what is he called, 21st Century, the director of 21st Century Education, who sat in a meeting and said, why don't you apply for some more waivers? You can go below state minimums. That was his advice to us. Not acceptable. So then we testify before the subcommittee for this House Bill 153. And we take big posters and we show pictures of the state and districts, and we demonstrate that, you know, if these districts don't pass levies in the next year, they're going to be heading down the same path as Little Miami. And while it's unfortunately worth the first district to get into this position, there are going to be many more. And so as a state legislature, wouldn't it be a good idea to figure this out now? Because in two years, you're going to have a problem that is much bigger than an $80 billion deficit. So it's not just Little Miami that's going down, it's the state of Ohio's education that is going down the tubes. So we give this, this information to them and because, you know, they've got 2,000 pages of a bill to read, and my guess is they're not reading that entire bill. So, so, you know, we want to point out the part about education because, I mean, who would figure that they're going to change a lot of educational law in a 15, 2,000-page budget bill? But indeed, they are. So you know what their answer is? Let me read you their answer. So that was about a month ago, we went up there, and they seemed very interested in what we had to say and impressed that we came up there and we gave them this information. So they just passed the house this is, they just passed their version of the budget bill and included it on page 1,573 are some stipulations about districts in fiscal emergency and what will happen to them. And among them, if you cannot show that you're going to get out of fiscal emergency in five years, that would be on our five-year forecast, there are five things that they've decided would be a good idea. So the state board will basically become your new board of education. These are the people that you don't know, and they go up for, I believe, monthly or bimonthly meetings in the state of Ohio. So they will have all powers over the school district except for one, and that is putting a levy on the ballot. And that is the only power that this board will have. That's it. I can't figure out why they wouldn't take that power as well, except that they probably just don't want to be responsible for raising taxes. Number two, subject to the approvals, they board, the district board shall continue to propose tax levies necessary to operate the district. Number three, employees and officers of the district are now employees of the state board of education. Number four, there's only two more. Number four, the state board may delegate any management and control functions to the district, of the district, to the district's financial, financial planning and supervision committee. That was these folks over here. And my guess is the state board up in Columbus isn't really going to want to do this, so they'll delegate all that here. And number five, the state board shall not revoke the charter of the district or transfer its territory to other districts. So it takes dissolution off the table and basically puts a school district that can't get enough money to operate in this perpetual limbo. It does not say who pays the bills, it doesn't say how you get out, it's just fiscal hell. So that is what their response was to...
So you told us what we all know, which is we can't expect any help from the state. We knew this before you went up there, we know it even more...
No, no, you know what, you know what, Mr. Mueller, I have faith in elected officials that most of them want to do the right thing.
I don't disagree with that, but we know from historical history that they don't know how to do this. They cannot fix this problem if they could, that would happen.
I think they lack courage.
Whatever the reason, they cannot fix it.
Well, the other, the other thing is...
It's our problem, we have to pass a levy.
Well, I understand that, but I think the other piece that you need to understand is us going up there, our predicament is very scary to them. For them to hide that in a budget bill, our predicament is very scary to us because we were correct in our assumption that they would have to dissolve us. That's what that tells us. So they've taken that off the table. And that's, but I want to know Stephanie's answer, and then we'll have to... One more question.
No, I do not expect us to fix those five pages up before I vote for a levy. I have supported levies in the past, and I vote on each levy as an issue, as I've stated before. I don't like the huge, when we did the 1695, we can't get all the pie in the sky. I said, let's do little bits and pieces. Those five pages that I gave the state commission, most of those people on that board don't know the district like we do. And like I said, I talked to various cross-sections to find out what some of their issues were in concern, and I wanted to share those with the commission.
This commission's job is nothing more than to fix our financial...
But you know what? You know what? I know that's their job. However, they need to know what the concerns are in this district because until they learn the district, and you know, I'm sorry, they work for, not all of them, but some of them are with the Department of Education.
Every district wants the best for their students. That's a good, that's kind of the part that you should be...
So, you know, I don't agree with you saying that, and I take offense to you saying that I need to have all five pages fixed before I vote for a levy. That is not true. And when I come up here and I say some of the comments that I say, do I always agree with them? No. But that's another part of the district that needs to be heard. And I have always said, you, and I encompass everyone in this room, needs to hear both sides of the story and then let the people decide and make their own decision. Do I always agree with what the no people say? No. Do I always agree with what the yes people say? No. But you need to hear, and again, you must encompassing everyone in this room and everyone in this district, everyone needs to hear what both sides of the story or what both sides are thinking and then make the decision.
How many people did you speak to?
When I did that email, oh my God, I probably, well, I didn't hear from everyone that I emailed, that I sent out an email, but I probably sent it out to 30 different people. And like I said, and it was just a cross-section of, you know what, let me see, give a general idea.
Six miles.
Like, let me finish, please. I let you speak, please let me speak. It was to get a feel for what some people are feeling in the district. Because some people said, you know what, Stephanie, thank you for asking, because no one has ever asked me what I thought or felt. And like I said, it was people from Salem Township, Harlan Township, Mayville, Morrow, people who have children, people who have recently graduated, people who don't have children. It was all across the board. It was the various circles of people that I know from school, sports, doctors, I mean, whomever. So this is people that I see in the community. So it wasn't just, oh, I just picked 30 people who are my friends. No, some of the people, you know what, they don't like me. But you know what? They responded back.
My point is exception is reality. These people over here know us better than anybody in this room. They didn't take it, they don't take it on the fact that we have a negative sounding board.
I have a question for you, Mr. Mueller. I mean, you're sitting here telling the board and, you know, our officials from our district here that, you know, SB 5, wow, you know, once we get that one, we're going to be able to start righting this ship from listening to the, you know, side how we are, you know? But then you turn around and you say, no, I don't want teachers salary cuts. So what do you expect SB 5, if it passes and goes into law, what do you expect these officials up here to gain from that to help this ship right itself?
One of the things I've seen in the works is we really need to raise the budget to fire people. There's something up there, there's something up in the order.
With all due respect, that is a conversation you guys need to have quietly. We're all here to talk to them. So I'm not...
I agree, we were just going to...
I know, but that...
I appreciate that.
We'll talk about it later, but...
Do you have a question?
Well, yeah, I'm back at Isaac's. I have a second grader at the Little Peace of Heaven that is Mayville Elementary, and my, I just have an issue with what you've said about, and I know you said, you know, you're going to make me the bad guy, and I just, I heard a lot of clapping when, earlier when everybody talked about the board being, you know, divided, and some supported and some don't, and I have a huge issue with that. And then for you to sit there and, I've agreed to quite a bit of what you said, but for you to sit there on the end and to say, I don't care whether it's Little Miami or whatever it's called, I just care that my kids get educated, is so contradictory to the basic fundamentals of getting this levy passed. It reads like you don't care. And I've heard what you said, and I very much believe that you do care. But for you to sit there and say, I don't care what it's called, I just want these kids to get a great education, evokes this whole attitude that people don't care about our schools. And I would be heartbroken if we dissolved. I don't understand on state level, I don't understand why I am voting on my child's education. I think there is something just inherently wrong with that. I don't, I don't know why Ohio is funded the way that it is. And to do levy after levy, the very definition of insanity is to do the same thing over and over again and expect a different result. So I think the entire thing is completely bananas. But I just have an issue with what you said. I just think that you need to weigh your words really carefully before you say it.
I don't go around saying, I don't...
No, you said it right here, and all it takes is one person...
Well, they need to listen. It was an explanation of what has been transpiring over the last five months.
I understand that. I'm just saying that sitting here as a full-fledged supporter, I will forever vote yes. I'm just saying the way that what you're saying is potentially interpreted, that I am a die-hard yes supporter, and it is making me feel deflated, like, like you don't really care that it's Little Miami. I'm just telling you how it reads.
And that's fine, I accept that.
All right. Can I just say one more thing? Is that right? Okay. Ron Thornberry, uh, you know, what I hear is we wanna go around the voters by dissolving the district. You know, the voters had to pass the levy, the voters had to pay for this. So we should've passed this levy, you know, with our voters and, and get this thing going. You know, I, I just don't understand how other solutions that don't involve the taxpayers paying it, we've sat there and said they're under, we're under taxed. So there's a revenue problem, not a spending problem, so we need to raise the revenue, so let's get the community to raise the revenue.
Well, I, I do, I do understand that, but my fundamental issue is they're saying we need this to educate our kids, yet they're not, you can't get that...
But then where's it gonna come from? Kim, it's gonna come from the taxpayers some way. We're under taxed, we're not paying our fair share. You want them to make, you wanna make, you want them, you want the state to make the people pay their fair share? We have to ask them. We have to invite them to, to pay it and make it sound good. I just, I don't get the, where's it gonna come from? It's gotta come from the people who aren't paying their fair share right now, they've got to pay it. And we've got, but we can't force them and twist their arm. So we, we ask them and we try to say, here's the good reasons to vote for Little Miami. I'm sad that you didn't say something about, when she said they might not get into college. That's not true.
It is true.
Susan went to colleges, she said they won't, they, she said no kids will get in. She said she went to all these guys. I said, Susan, so did they tell you your kid won't get in? She said, no, but they said he won't have the oppo, he won't have the experience that the other kids had. Okay, that's a community choice, the community's choosing this.
Didn't she say her child has French? Because I'll, I'll tell you right now, that's one of the big differences.
No, I know she's very sad about, I am very sad about too. It's a community choice though to not have that.
A lot of colleges now are requiring a couple of years of foreign language.
And, and we have two years, we, we offer two and we can get the extra one online, okay? I, I'm sorry, but that, that's what my kid's gonna do. He's gonna go to Ohio State and do whatever he wants, going to Little Miami, okay? I gave, I gave up trying to look at another school, Clinton-Massie. We looked, I stood in line to wait, to open and roll. My son changed his mind, he likes it here. We, I like it here. Almost half the people who voted seem to like it here. So let's get on board and get the levy passed. That, it has to get the money out of the people's pockets.
Do you have any idea why, what the issue was with this levy?
Hundred and forty-three votes? We missed, we missed by a hundred and forty-three votes? I think that's pretty darn close. To, to be telling people that we're not gonna get anything back when we're paying our, we gotta pay our bill, we gotta edu, educate our kids. I, I don't see the, the problem with saying we need to pass a levy. I don't have a problem with it.
But did you also, well, first of all, what we were saying was the, the education that we, um, believed that our district should be above the minimums...
Okay.
Was not being paid for with that thirteen point nine five...
I understand that part, I understand, I do understand that.
If you put a twenty-five levy on there, then you would've had a worse port support.
Then you're gonna have to, the state is gonna have to say that we're gonna raise the taxes without you voting on it. So I, they're not gonna do that. So we have to ask the people to support the school.
There was a huge issue that has been forgotten since we went through this, but there were assumptions that were being made to put together the five-year forecast upon which the thirteen point nine five mills was based. And I vehemently disagreed with those assumptions or lack of some of the assumptions being included in that they did not account for further erosion of our enrollment through of enrollment. Totally ignored that. Um, there was also, um, just one other thing. Um, I'm just drawing a blank, but there were, there were a couple of things that were cuts from the state budget in, in further years was not taken into account. And those were, so while I could've supported a minimum education as a beginning point, to me, when I looked at that forecast, there was no way that that was gonna get us out of fiscal emergency at year, year five. And even on that, on that five-year forecast, it all showed...
But, but that's not, I, you know, I...
It was, it was the gas prices going up.
We needed to pass, we needed to pass the levy. We, we don't know what we'd get if we don't pass it. We know what we, we know what we, we know we're moving in the right direction if we pass it. I, I just don't see the, the debate about whether, if we don't pass it, well, we don't know. We know it will be worse than probably what we got. The next thing could be worse. We were a hundred and forty-three votes away and we could've passed it. I, I do believe we could've passed it. If, if we had more, uh, support for a core, solid core curriculum. I mean, they just got the new standards out. You know, the, the new core standards are out and they're, you know, that we're now in national standards. I, I just, I'm optimistic about the future of this, but we gotta pass the levy and we, we missed it by a hundred and forty-three votes.
I know, I know you're up there, Deb. Yeah, I'm just saying...
Last, you're last, okay?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll find you that.
Thank you.
No, I've lived here for like three, four years out in Vodkow Central, which is by the way the fourth area of the township, Washington Township, Oregon, which has been forgotten. Uh, but one thing that I've, that has always really bothered me is when we dropped to that twenty-first floor and we pared that levy a year early, I think that was the biggest mistake this district ever made. And I've often wondered, because everybody in my neighborhood knows this, that everything that comes out of anybody's mouth that supports the district is, you know, a lie, basically. Right, Mr. Meyer? Are you out there? Okay. I've often wondered what would happen if we said, look, we goofed by dropping to the twenty-first floor, we made a mistake, that's partly what put us in this, and I firmly believe that we wouldn't be where we were if we hadn't dropped that levy, because it's way easier to pass a renewal than it is to try and start from scratch. What would happen if we just said, hey, look, we goofed, we made a mistake, you know, people are, you know, good about forgiving mistakes rather than feeling like we are trying to pull the wool over our eyes. I think that was a huge mistake and I think if we admitted that, it might actually do some good here. We goofed, we just made a mistake and that's where we are now, can we help us out?
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay. Uh, we can move on to the chair?
I'll move.
A second.